Fred Albert and Jessica Sophia. And also Blaine Hess. So we are now prepared to begin. David Perry.
My name is Dave Perry and I'm President of the West Virginia Board of Education. But I remain an educator and advocate for all students in our state. Recent, as the constitutional body charged with the supervision of all public schools, not charter schools, it is our responsibility to work with the legislature to ensure that all, let me emphasize, all students have access to a free, thorough, efficient, and equitable system of education. The education landscape has changed. The best path forward is one that engages all West Virginia families, West Virginia communities, West Virginia teachers, educators, service personnel, and our lawmakers. If we all work together, we can actually change the climate of achievement in our schools and economic progress for our state. It has been said, good public policy makes good politics. As the Finance Committee deliberates the House Education version, please, please keep intact minimal changes to the Education Committee amended version and report it out to the full house for adoption. We welcome a collaborative and unified effort to prepare our students to be the workforce of tomorrow. The challenges are significant, but they can be overcome. We can do it together because what weighs in the balance requires us to. We thank each of you for what you do to support our state and we look forward to our working toward a stronger and brighter West Virginia.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Karen Nancy.
I'm Karen Nancy. I'm a former member of the Campbell County Board of Education and a West Virginia graduate through West Virginia schools. I want to thank you first for letting me speak today. I very much appreciate it. I'm here to request that the West Virginia House of Delegates not pass Senate Bill 451 for the following reasons. One, if the House votes the bill down, that will guarantee that the bill will not become law if the West Virginia Senate decides in conference to put back in the bill legislation that is detrimental to our education system. It is a bad bill for education. It will not have a positive impact on West Virginia's educational deficiencies except for raising salaries that will allow us to recruit higher qualified teachers. Every year, this legislature uses the excuse that West Virginia is on the bottom of education nationwide to introduce bills that are supposed to provide sweeping reform. Just because you call it sweeping reform does not make it good reform. The bill is nothing more than a charter school, non-public school bill under a different name, not sweeping reform. Many students require additional accommodations to learn and many students live in dysfunctional homes. This bill does nothing to improve the gap between those students and the students at the top that are performing as well as other students across the US.
Thank you, Mrs. Nancy. Next, we have Lori Kessler. And I apologize if I pronounce anybody's last name wrong.
Thank you. My name is Lori Kessler. I'm a board member of Marshall County. I serve as the President of the School Board Association representing all 55 county boards of educations. Due to limited time, I can tell you that the charter schools, we believe, will not work in West Virginia. Due to spotty poverty, academic performance, charter schools are designed to serve the best and the brightest. Charter schools lack transparency and something not being heard, charter schools will affect the passage of county board excess levies and bonds. Passage of excess levies and bonds prove to be matters that are not only critical but maintain many counties. Many counties have never been able to even pass a levy or a bond and with this added into the mix, may never be able to again. These schools are not public schools and can you imagine the administrators of these counties trying very hard to mandate or oversee or make sure that these students have the education that West Virginia should and does require? Lastly, I will close with, obviously, we oppose this. I would close with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Natalie La Liberty.
I am a concerned elementary principal. Education is what we pass to the future and must remain a unifier for our state. This bill offers some encouraging positive but seems like revenge tactics on our profession. How does having administrators change every year and improve the education of our children? Heck, even this legislative body has given four years to make magic or wreak havoc. Leadership is the art of motivating others to act towards a common goal. Inspiration and trust are built over time and with knowledge, not a never-ending one-year cycle of supervisors. I cannot think of any other profession that would allow such a disruptive measure. Innovation is not the enemy of consistency and experience does not oppose improvement. We need strong leaders who can depend to spearhead both stability and the mission to greatness. Alec works with governing bodies to weaken labor unions, reduce corporate taxes, enact charter school policies, among other special interests. Mr. Mitch has proclaimed that West Virginia schools are in last place and that our kids deserve better. This ranking, according to Alec, is not based on test scores, not certified teachers, not graduation rates, not class size, but on having charter schools and vouchers. Shame on Mr. Mitch for floating this trial balloon of deception. Rankings that matter are that West Virginia is first in universal pre-K education.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is David Kledkowski.
Thank you. I'm with West Virginia Professional Educators. We are an association of teachers and administrators all across West Virginia. And when you go out in the wintertime, they tell you to dress in layers. So you dress in layers and you're ready for the day. If you put too many layers on, then you can't move. That's what this bill is, too many layers. When this bill was created, it caused too many layers and no one could move. The House Education Committee has thankfully removed some of these binding layers. Thanks to Speaker Hanschel for giving WVPE and other stakeholders an opportunity to meet with him, make suggestions, and give input into revising this bill. This should have been done in the Senate back during the bill's infancy. Our West Virginia professional education measures have expressed her support for the pay raise, the $250 tax credit incentive, teachers' recommendations on student promotion, the funding and enabling of counselors, and I've heard great support from our central office administrators for the $1,400 net enrollment clause. The House Education Committee and their wisdom have removed some of the layers that our members feel are hampering the effectiveness of this bill. Both the non-cevility clause and paycheck protection and ESAs have been removed. Let's keep it this way. Our members have great concerns about seniority and RIF situations. Seniority and certification should be the main components in this decision. I'll leave you with some members' comments on charter schools.
Thank you, sir. Up next is Sean O'Leary.
Hello, I'm Sean O'Leary with the West Virginia Center on Budget and Policy. I would like to first commend the House Education Committee for removing education savings accounts from the bill and would encourage the rest of the body to keep this harmful policy out of our education reform efforts. While private school advocates describe education savings accounts as a way to improve educational options for low-income and minority students, the five, that's five only existing programs in the country, have failed to effectively benefit these students. Instead, they have mainly functioned as a way to transfer public taxpayer funds to private for-profit sector. Researchers show that student performance in private schools is strongly related to the amount these schools charge in tuition. Low-income families who lack thousands of dollars to spend on tuition would still lack access to high-performing private schools even with use of an ESA. In addition, only 19 counties in West Virginia have no private schools and 14 counties have only one. Private schools in West Virginia are largely found in the state's more urban and wealthier counties with over half of the state's 10,000 private school students attending school in one of just five counties. Transferring taxpayer dollars to private schools will do little to improve the educational outcomes of the state's students. The design of ESA programs is fatally flawed, leaving out the students they were supposedly designed to help. Instead, they take resources from our public schools to the benefit of those families whose students are already headed to private schools.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Tega Tony.
Hello, my name is Tega Tony and I'm the Vice President of AFT West Virginia and also a teacher in Fayette County with two sons, one of which is in public school. According to Credo by Stanford University, which is the Center for Research on Educational Outcome, charter restart models are not effective. They are aimed at the transfer of low-performing schools to charter management organizations to improve student outcomes. The original aspirations for these programs were to help students in struggling schools reach top tiers of performance. It is stated that they were more aspirational than realistic. None of the 21 schools that were approached met targeted proposals in reading or math. ESAs are also unfounded. According to the National Education Policy Center by the University of Colorado Boulder, they are just legal in six states. There is limited research on ESAs, so we look at vouchers. The recent studies on vouchers suggest that students using vouchers do worse than they would have done had they remained in their public schools. And research also points to problems with accountability, access, and segregation. ESA programs embrace privatization and non-transparency by design and accountability systems are absent. Privatization creates tiered systems of haves and have-nots. Our students in West Virginia are as smart, gifted, and blessed as any students in the nation. They were ranking 27th on ACT performance and in the top six on AP. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Up next is Fred Albert.
Good morning. My name is Fred Albert. I'm the President of AFT West Virginia and I appreciate the opportunity to be here today, realizing how quickly 70 seconds goes. But I just want to thank the House Education Committee for doing something that the Senate Education Committee did not do. Thank you for taking some time. Thank you for asking very measured questions on this bill that affects so many in our state. What I would like to say to you today is it's disturbing to me as the leader of over 10,000 school employees in our state that not one teacher that I have been able to find, nor one superintendent, nor one principal, nor one parent was ever involved in the drafting of this bill. And by that, I know that we don't draft the bills, but we would love to have some input. I sat down with Senator Rucker before the session started and gave her that offer. I have yet to receive that phone call from Senator Rucker, although she has said that she did talk with me. Yes, she did, but not about drafting this bill. I do appreciate what the House...
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is Jessica Sophia.
My name is Jessica Sophia and I'm an English teacher at Spring Mills High School in Berkeley County, West Virginia, where I've been a public educator for 15 years. Last week, I listened to elected officials falsely claim that public education in this state is failing. The great work of my life was compared to a fatal disease. I have never felt less empowered. If you truly want to know how to reform public education and empower teachers, I can tell you. Public educators in West Virginia want professional development, content-specific training. We need more school counselors, full-time nurses in every school. We need to confront and address the mental health crisis in our communities. We need to talk about gun safety and violence. We need smaller class-size caps and programs to address student poverty. We need funding for field trips, classroom novels, science experiments. We need time to collaborate with each other, time to conference with every student and parent, and time to plan. We need to recruit and retain teachers of color so that our increasingly diverse student population sees themselves reflected in the faculties of their schools. And we also still need a dedicated revenue source for PIA, which has been lost in this conversation. What we don't need is to turn our public schools into a for-profit system. What we don't need is the funneling of public tax dollars into the creation of charters. What we don't need are legislators who are more concerned about PAC money and corporate...
Next up, Blaine Hess. And for all those who are speaking today, you can submit your written comments to the clerk for inclusion in the record. So remember, you can submit your comments to the clerk for inclusion in the record. Mr. Hess?
Yes, good morning. I'm Blaine Hess, Superintendent of Jackson County Schools and Vice President of the West Virginia Association of School Administrators, an organization that represents the superintendents of all 55 counties. We've registered our opposition to House Bill 451, but we also acknowledge the recent work in the House Education Committee, but also realize that there are other stages of legislative process, so that the end result is not yet certain. I think it's very telling to note that as Senate Bill 451 has been debated, that those items not drawing controversy in heated debate are those items that have been developed over time and included involvement from education stakeholders and experienced educators throughout the state. Working together is possible and we can yield positive results for our state and, most importantly, for our children. Again, we continue to support the governor's pay raise proposals and addressing PIA and believe that we should continue to work together.
Thank you, sir. If the next 10 speakers will come forward when I announce your name. Jeremy Green, Terry Gerger, Sarah Stankis, Gary Price, David Price, Tim Woodward, Deborah Sullivan, Kathy Bradley, Jennifer Cox, and Miki Blackwell. First up is Jeremy Green.
Good morning. My name is Jeremy Green. I'm an agriculture educator at Jefferson High School and also a member of the Jefferson County Education Association. The charter school and education savings account provisions of this bill seem to be reflective of political initiatives by out-of-state interest groups that have deep pockets and bent ears of legislators who are supposed to have the interest of people and students at heart. Take the charter schools component of this legislation. It is universally understood that charter schools do not perform well in rural areas. I've been a resident of West Virginia for 38 years. We define ourselves as rural. The railroading of this and other initiatives are reflective of the disconnect between legislation and education realities. The reality, as I see it, is the main provisions of Senate Bill 451 do little to change the education truths that exist in the field. We're regularly asked to do more with less and charter schools and education savings accounts take money out of the school system regardless of the political spends that are put on it. I can appreciate the arguments and talking points of both of these reforms. People should have choice and luckily, they already do. However, the choice should not be the responsibility of John Q. Taxpayer.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Terry Gerger.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Terry George. I am the Superintendent of Fayette County Schools. No doubt you will hear people today speak that oppose... No doubt you will hear people today speak that oppose and/or support this bill. I applaud the actions of the House Education and Finance Committees for taking this bill apart and looking at it at each component and basing it on its own merits. But most importantly, I urge each of you today to take a stand for the students of West Virginia public school system. The education reform bill was drafted without the input of West Virginia educators. It was written by out-of-state so-called "education experts." Our state has a history of permitting outside interests to take advantage of our rich natural resources. Now we have similar outside interests wanting to take advantage of our most precious resource, our students. They claim our schools are failing. They claim they can fix the problem for us. Haven't we had enough of outsiders fixing our problems? I urge each of you to work with the true education experts, West Virginia classroom teachers, to provide the necessary resources needed to improve our existing school system. West Virginians know our state better than anyone. Let's work together to make it a better system. Take a stand for our students.
Thank you, sir.
Take a stand for our...
Next up is Sarah Stankis.
I am glad that we are discussing education reform. Absolutely, our West Virginia students deserve the very best. Each and every day, West Virginia educators enter their classrooms facing a number of realities. Their students have different needs. Some come hungry, some have learning challenges, others have a list of traumatic events in their young lives. Yet we educate them all. The process that we have witnessed over the last couple of weeks is not how we want to ensure that our education system works for everyone. Our stakeholders have a lot of great ideas for how, of how to make our education system better, but we haven't heard those ideas, and therein lies the problem. Education reform cannot be forced upon our state's best educators without their input. Great leaders understand that top-down reform is never effective. So, recent improvements of Senate Bill 451 are demonstrating promise. Not one superintendent nor one educator in this state is opposed to implementing ideas that will help our students. Our students' success is our success.
Thank you, ma'am. Gary Price.
Gary Price, Superintendent of Marion County Schools. I'm proud to read a letter submitted by Tony Poling, a National Board Certified English teacher in Marion County, and 2017 West Virginia Teacher of the Year. West Virginia's public schools and highly qualified teachers who man those classrooms are the great equalizers. They represent the embodiment of America's dream of equal opportunity, a free quality education for all students regardless of socioeconomic status or racial/ethnic backgrounds. Public schools are an imperfect system because the heart of any school is its students, messy and imperfect, lovable and thirsting to learn. The current call for education reform in our state seems to forget that. Public education in West Virginia is not broken. Our teachers and our students are constantly being told they are at the bottom, but the success of our schools is more than the sum of a single test score. Our students are graduating at high rates. West Virginia is at the top of the nation in access to early education. West Virginia is providing quality career and technical education opportunities. West Virginia is first in the nation for school breakfast because we realize that until we meet our students' basic needs, they cannot learn.
Next up, David Price.
Thank you. I'm David Price, Superintendent of Raleigh County Schools, the fifth-largest school district in the state of West Virginia, serving 12,000 students and 1,500 employees. This past weekend, our voters of Raleigh County renewed our excess levy at a rate of 88% in favor of our excess levy. 60% of our graduating class last year went on to higher education, receiving $5.5 million in scholarships. 98% of our Career Tech Center students went on to college, career, or military last year. We serve 2,000 special-needs students. We serve 12,000 students with 14 school nurses, 700 which have healthcare plans. I say all of that to say this. There is no one that knows the challenges, strengths, and weaknesses better than the trained professional educators of the state of West Virginia, our teachers, principals, and superintendents. To have the true discussions and debates about quality education and school improvement that is student-focused in West Virginia, these people need to be included in the discussions. I applaud the House Education Committee for their work in amendments to Senate Bill 451. Much more is needed. It is my belief that each item of the bill should stand on its own merits and should be voted on separately.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up is Tim Woodward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tim Woodward, Superintendent of Hancock County Schools. I'm not going to stand here and try to speed-read to you because I want you to hear what I have to say. If we want to change and change comprehensive education in West Virginia, we've got to come in and comprehensively change our communities. Our communities are hurting. Our children are in poverty. I see children every day who are eaten from head to toe by infestations of bedbugs. I see children who have less access to education because of the color of their skin. I see children who live in poverty levels that you and I cannot imagine. Build me a charter school to fix that, and I'll be the first to sign up. Until we face the fact that schools are a symptom, not the problem, we're going to go round and round. We want to throw $130 million into education. We appreciate that. Let me tell you how to spend it. Build me mental health facilities that are the best in the state and in the nation. Help me build and put social workers and mental health officials at every school. Help me give teachers the raise and service personnel they deserve. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Deborah Sullivan?
I serve on the State Board of Education, but I speak to you today as a private citizen. I've spent my entire career in education, with many years as teacher and administrator in both public and non-public schools. I have deep respect for both systems, and I respect the differences between them. Proposals to divert public funding to support private education are wrong. Public funds should be reserved for public purposes directed by authorities strictly answerable to the public. Families have every right to opt out of the public school system, but they should not expect public funds to support whatever private option they may choose. Charter schools are private schools in disguise. They receive public funds but operate with little of the accountability, oversight, or transparency that we rightly expect of public institutions. Money aside, do we want to gamble the future of young people on the untested judgment of individuals whose main idea sometimes seems merely to do something other than what we've been doing? I'm absolutely not convinced that the way to strengthen our public schools is by diverting public funds to support a parallel set of schools or educational options.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Kathy Bradley.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I'm a parent of two students at Canal County Schools. I'm the principal of Canal City Elementary. I'm also the President of the West Virginia Association of Elementary and Middle School Principals. There's been lots of concern over this bill not addressing student achievement. We all can assume that student achievement rises as class sizes drop. With less students, teachers can focus not only on differentiating instruction for all levels, but they can tend to the individual needs of students from low-income homes, those who are struggling with mental issues, and those with special needs. West Virginia ranks among the highest in the nation in childhood poverty as well as struggling with the drug crisis. This affects our students every single day. Trauma impacts their developmental growth and their ability to learn, yet our schools are severely understaffed with mental health professionals, school counselors, nurses, social workers, and psychologists. Having smaller class sizes allows teachers to provide students a better opportunity to have their educational, social, and emotional needs met. Having larger class sizes prevents schools from making the achievement that is required and from giving students the education they deserve. Please devote more funding to staffing schools with more support personnel and smaller class sizes, and not to charter schools that will contribute to cutting teaching positions in our schools, thus creating longer classes, larger classes, and less attention to...
Next up is Jennifer Cox.
Good morning. I'm Jennifer Cox, Principal of Skyview Elementary School in Morgantown. I'm here today because it is my purpose to serve and protect and advocate for the students I serve in this great state. No massive overhaul of our education system can increase student achievement. We must work diligently together, taking small steps in unity, to impact our students in a fruitful and genuine manner to move our state forward. We must work together to invest in the supports that will help our students succeed despite traumas. Students need wraparound services such as mental health supports, social workers, nurses, and other service entities. These kinds of supports have far-reaching implications in the success of students in schools. We need to invest in services in our public schools, not create avenues to move funds to private sources. We should increase our funding formula and increase our counselors, social workers, and psychologists. We should invest in public community schools and health programs and not find ways of taking away funding and support from our schools. Fund more services, and let's put our innovations to all children. Our money cannot be dedicated to charter schools or vouchers, which only moves a student and his or her trauma to a new setting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Miki Blackwell. And remember, you can submit your comments up to me for inclusion in the record.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Miki Blackwell. I'm from Blue Creek, West Virginia, seven miles up the road. And I'm here today as representative of the Elementary and Middle School Principals Association. I cannot change your mind in 70 seconds, but I will say this: The construction of this bill is specious and is not sufficient for what we need to do. This bill was created without input from the folks of West Virginia for the folks of West Virginia. I see my conservative friends here today with their "don't tread on me" flags, and I invite you not to tread on public education without working with us today. We had a call on Friday. We are here today. We will work with you. We will work with plans. Kill this bill, support the governor's proposals, and let's work together over the next course, over the course of the next year to develop true change sponsored by teachers, principals, service personnel, superintendents, and everyone involved in West Virginia. Do not tell us what to do from out-of-state sources. That is not how we run our schools, and that is not what we expect out of our government. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next 10 speakers, please come forward. Barry Holstein, Tressa Howe, David Howe, Kathy Kraus, Carla Haskins, Marshall Wilson, Kimberly Earl, Joanna Burt Kinderman, Micah Woglinski, and Sarah Anderson. To our guests, please be courteous to each speaker by refraining from applause. All right, next up is Barry Holstein.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to speak today in support of Senate Bill 451 as passed from the Senate. Contrary to many beliefs, West Virginia is in an educational crisis. Senator Harsdy recently discussed a ceremony in Logan County where 100 students were recognized for graduating with a 3.0 or higher GPA, but then only about 10 students qualified for the promised scholarship. In the words of the distinguished senator, "We have collectively failed these students." How can we have such a disconnect? I'm here today as a parent, taxpayer, and someone who supports our teachers as well as our students. The Senate version of this bill gave many good things that I think we all would agree on, but it seemingly gave the teachers what they had requested. But what about the parent? What about the children? What's in the bill for them? The freedom to choose is a powerful tool. The bill that originated from the Senate had components that provided parents with choices. Charter schools and ESAs are two such choices. Additionally, a proposed change in teacher seniority would be a welcome change, giving local administrators choices and options in the retention of good teachers. A story was told to me about a RIF situation that was settled by selecting bingo balls to see who was allowed to remain employed.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Tressa Howe.
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Teresa Howe. I'm a parent with students utilizing public education, and I fully support Senate Bill 451 as it was provided to the House. My senior last year lost 11 instructional days, and yet the unions and special interest groups failed to mention this. Studies are produced from many years ago indicating the need for teachers. This problem still exists, and throwing money will improve nothing. 5,000 students left public schools last year, with part moving to homeschooling due to the concern by parents of our education system. While we graduate in the high 80th percentile, at 45%, do not attend higher education. Where do they go since the data indicates our education system needs reform? Their knowledge and skill level will not be at a level that they can function in their jobs. Many view campaign with education being a key issue and need for business growth. Do you think a simple raise is the fix? No. Senate Bill 451 will help in gaining skilled, experienced professionals, funding for social workers and nurses, population growth with incentives, business growth as our students reach higher levels of achievement.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
David Howe.
My name is David Howe. I wore this red shirt today to remind you of the people who walked in parades for you, who went door-knocking for you, who spoke to our family, friends, and neighbors for you, who defended you on social media and in the newspapers. You made promises that you would do educational reform in this state, and Mitch Carmichael in the Senate had the guts and the courage to hand you a wonderful bill that would bring true reform to West Virginia's educational system. My friends say that the governor and this body is throwing us under the bus, and I remind them that we are the bus. You are choosing to die ball for the bus and jump under it. I implore you to pass this bill as handed to you by the Senate. If the teachers' unions could fix the problems of this state, our state would not rank last in the bottom, and our kids would not need remedial classes in order to take college classes. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I ask you again to pass this bill as handed to you by the Senate.
Thank you, sir. Up next is Kathy Kraus.
I'm Kathy Hess Kraus. I'm a mom of five. I have three children who have graduated from Putnam County Schools, and I'm currently homeschooling our youngest, too. We spent 18 years in the public school system and the last nine years on the outskirts of it. I have watched this system deteriorate day by day, year by year. Parent and students are desperate for change. They are desperate for options and choices, and many are desperate to literally save their children's lives. I am speaking for the children and the parents that feel they have no voice and no choice, the ones that cannot speak up because if they do, they fear that they, or worse, their children will be bullied and retaliated against from the unions, teachers, and others who oppose this bill. As a West Virginia parent, I want legislators to know that support comprehensive education reform, that you are supported. Many parents who dare not speak up for being shouted down by a very organized and very loud minority are so very thankful for your courage to do what is best for West Virginia's children. As legislators who want to do the right thing here and now to effect comprehensive education reform, this is your time to make history.
Thank you, ma'am. Up next is Marshall Wilson.
Mr. Chairman, Delegate Marshall Wilson, District 60, South Berkeley County. I've spoken with many parents and taxpayers who do not trust the West Virginia public education system to safely, thoroughly, effectively, and efficiently educate their children. Among them was Ms. Amber Pack, who asked me to speak for her today because she doesn't have a union to speak for her or to provide her time off to come here today. Her daughter Audrey is a young girl who suffers from severe autism. Ms. Pack recorded her daughter's teachers allegedly abusing her at school. This incident and a number of others indicate that the current closed system led by an untouchable cabal must be decentralized, open to scrutiny, and accountable to the parents of students and the taxpayers who fund the system. That accountability is the purpose of Senate Bill 451. The relevant questions are: Whose money is it? Whose schools are they? Whose children are they? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Kimberly Earl.
My name is Kimberly Earl, and I am a county wellness committee member, a PTO president, and an LSIC president. Most importantly, I am a parent of four children in Canal County Public Schools. My 11-year-old daughter Maddox said it best in this very building: "We don't need more schools. We need more people to care about the schools we already have." Maddox would be here today, but she really didn't want to miss magnet music. Every Monday, she travels to Mary C. Snow Elementary here in Canal County for this fine arts program. She, along with 140 other students from 21 different schools, will be students of MCS for a few hours each week as part of this magnet school of music. Everyone keeps talking about West Virginia schools upping their game and school choice. Everyone keeps talking about West Virginia schools upping their game, and school choice will create competition. West Virginia schools don't need competition to up their game; they need you to quit tying their hands. You want to reform education in West Virginia? Give them pay that allows them to recruit and retain quality teachers. Give them lower classroom sizes so that they can get one-on-one time with the students who need their extra help. Give them one school nurse per building so they don't have to teach math while holding that bloody nose. Lower the counselor-people ratio so that they have someone available to assist a student in crisis while they continue to teach.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Joanna Burt-Kinderman.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Joanna Burt-Kinderman. I'm a math instructional coach in Pocahontas County, Pocahontas County High School, class of nineteen ninety-four. I returned home to raise my girls, who are nine and eleven, and to dedicate my life to every single kid and every single kid's future in this state. I work to improve math teaching and learning in Pocahontas County, and our outcomes have been studied by the U.S. Department of Education, commended by the National Science Foundation, and we have some funding to begin to scale our promising approach across this state. I'm really good at messy problems, and I want to help you out with this one. One of the best predictors of student outcomes is family income. Any work you can do to diversify our economy and make sure our parents have good jobs is guaranteed to increase student outcomes in this state. Given this truth, one of the best predictors of student outcomes is family incomes. We're doing amongst the best in the nation, and our outcomes are getting better. We're ranked fifth and second nationally for kids in poverty and reading and math by NAEP scores. This isn't an excuse. One of the best predictors of out...
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Micah Wglinski.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. My name is Micah Wglinski. I'm here from Mon County. I'd like to -- special thanks to all the teachers, service personnel, principals, superintendents in this room for doing the work you do every day. Thank you. I have two children in Mon County in fifth and third grade. Our high schools are third and eighth in the state. We continuously vote for excess levies. We put our money where our mouth is. We are willing to pay more in property taxes to provide our schools with the funds they need. I keep hearing that our schools are failing. Our schools are failing. Well, how is it that we have a ninety percent graduation rate? That's third in the country. Our ACT scores put us right in the middle, about thirtieth in the country. And I would challenge everyone in this legislature who spends all the time that they can to roll back environmental protections, to roll back drinking water protections, to give tax breaks to out-of-state companies, the $300 million inventory tax, to spend all that time and all that energy to give these teachers and the superintendents and the principals the resources that they need. That's what we need. We need to support public education. We can't take our limited funds to give them to private companies whose motivation is profit. Support public education; reject Senate Bill 451. Thank you.
Next up is Sarah Anderson.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Sarah Anderson. I am a Board of Education member in Mon County. I am a professor of education at West Virginia University, and I'm a mother of two at Mountainview Elementary in Morgantown, a kindergartner, and a third grader. I'm here today to urge legislators to vote against this bill. As we've heard this morning already, this bill does not do what it needs. Research, time and again, shows us that charter schools do not work, virtual charter schools in particular. Research also is equivocal. There's no information showing us that ESAs can work. I also want to stress a few things that have already been stated in terms of the way -- the things that children are bringing to schools that this bill doesn't address: poverty, trauma, broken homes. We need the resources in our schools, in our counties, to address those things. Children come with extreme stressors and health problems, and what in this bill is addressing those problems? Teachers need the resources to spend time and dedicated energy. We need social workers in those schools to make sure that they can function. Thank you.
Next up, Carla Haskins.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Carla Hoskins, and I have had experience with the private school sector, the public school sector, and the homeschool sector, and I am just here to tell you that I'm not here to malign anyone. There are good parents, bad parents; there are good teachers and bad teachers, and I think, for the most part, all West Virginians, whether they're teachers or parents, are decent people who want what's best for our children. But we need school choice, if for no other reason than to minister to the needs of kids like my daughter, who are abnormal of intelligence, but on the lower end of that spectrum, who managed to read well enough but perhaps struggled in math or other subjects, and were able to tread water well enough that they didn't meet the guidelines to qualify for any special help. And so they were passing, but they were just passing. And yet, these are children with the intelligence and the ability to go to college, and yet we're not preparing them for that because we're just getting them by. For that reason, I pulled my daughter out and homeschooled her, not because I had, really, the opinion that public schools were evil or bad or weren't trying to do their jobs, but because I had a choice. But not every parent has the choice that I had. Not every parent can homeschool their child; not every parent can afford private school. For those children, we need funds in place.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, the next ten speakers, please come forward when I call your name. Karen Sharendorf Ashbray, Jenny Anderson, Adam Culver, Jeffrey Reynolds, Lorraine Davis, Patty Riff, Nancy Cogory, Rose Rosanna, and Dan Broke. First up will be Karen Sharendorf.
My name is Karen Lemery. Sharendorf was my maiden name. I'm a proud retired public school teacher from Montague County. After thirty-eight years in the classroom, I think I have the experience to tell you a thing or two about education and teachers, but most of all, children. The children of West Virginia are our future and our hope, yet many of them are the most vulnerable. Taking away money from the already underfunded public schools and giving it to charter schools will cause irreparable damage to their future, our future. The propaganda put forth by charter schools, by nonprofit -- by profit companies and proponents cannot sway me from what I know to be true. The neediest of our schoolchildren suffer from homelessness, poverty, poor parenting, prejudice, mental health problems, disabilities, and hunger. If you think the answer is charter schools with untrained individuals who answer to no one but the corporate line, I have one thing to say to you: What the hell is the matter with you? Do you have such low opinion of teachers?
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Ashbray.
Hi, I'm Ash. I'm here to make sure that those supporting this monstrous bill are aware of just who this is going to affect. This bill is going to affect our taxpayers, service personnel, teachers, students, and their parents. By conglomerating educational issues into a one-hundred odd-page document and rushing it, it's clear that our government is desperately attempting to hide bill portions that are detrimental to our educational system. There is nothing in this bill that addresses student improvement. Parts of this bill are designed to severely hinder our public education and our children by sucking resources from public schools and funneling said resources to homeschooling, charter schooling, and secular and private schools. Private schooling should be an option, but it should not take away support for our public education, nor should wealthy families be advantaged by establishing ESAs in charter schools. I'm asking you to take a stand and kill this poorly constructed bill. Your constituents are going to remember your actions. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Jenny Anderson.
Good morning. My name is Jenny Anderson. I have been a parent of public schoolchildren for almost thirty years in the Cabell County School District. I have volunteered in multiple public schools and have been part of policy change on the most local level, all the way to the state level. And I'm just a parent. What makes me an expert, as well as hundreds of other parents like me? I've seen many changes over the span of thirty years, from the inside out, and over and over again, it is the top policymaking that falls short and has weakened our public education system. You tend to look at those trends from other states, nothing wrong with that, but you drool over what other states have attempted only to find is not a good fit for West Virginia schools. This type of change has failed our students. Please ask the real experts here, and for more than seventy seconds. I was prepared to read a little book today based on "Give Me Some Muffin." I'm going to send it to everyone. But what I would like to say is, this is a collection.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Remember, you can submit your written comments to me for inclusion in the record. Next up is Adam Culver. Adam Culver. Okay, we're going to skip over Adam and go to Jeffrey Reynolds. Jeffrey Reynolds.
Mr. Chairman, distinguished members of the committee, thank you for this opportunity. I'm here this morning representing our Mingo County Education Association members who are hard at work this morning in their classrooms and their schools. We oppose both the original Senate version of 451 and the committee substitute for 451. Bottom line, this is a bad bill, and you need to reject it. Our members view this legislation as an attack on education, not a reform of education. It's an attack on our most senior employees, changing their insurance at the time they are ready to retire, and messing with the seniority of many of our employees. An attack on all educators as you devalue our certification and allow charter schools to hire non-certified individuals. An attack on our already financially-strapped school systems, who struggle each day to make decisions of what to cut next. And it's an attack on our state from outside interests who would pillage for their own profit the finances for our public schools with very little concern for the students of our state. If you want to reform education, reject this bill in its entirety and do it the right way. Put task force together and consider that...
Thank you, sir. Next up is Lorraine Davis.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to express my opposition to Senate Bill 451 in its original and revised form. I am Lorraine Davis, a teacher at Tuck Valley High School in Mingo County. First, as an educator, I feel compelled to rebut the assertion that West Virginia ranks forty-seventh or forty-eighth in the nation concerning education. Actually, according to the ACT data in 2017, West Virginia students scored a composite of 20.4, with the national average being 20.8. Eighteen states scored lower than West Virginia, which does not substantiate Senator Carmichael's claim of West Virginia scoring last. However, I agree that public school systems need improvement. We should all want to be ranked number one in all aspects. However, there is no validated evidence to suggest that the proposed changes will have a positive influence on student achievement. On the contrary, the proposed changes could likely result in the opposite. If charter schools in any form are allowed to practice in the state of West Virginia without following the same criteria imposed on public schools, the data will not be comparable between the two entities. In West Virginia, the poverty rate is nearly 20%. The county in which I serve...
Next up is Patty Riff.
Good morning. I'm Patty Riff, secretary at Dingus Elementary in Mingo County, West Virginia, AFT service personnel representative. I'm very disturbed at the lack of care concerning our students and employees pertaining to the Senate Bill 451. I have been a secretary for thirty-four years at one school in Mingo County and have seen many children come through our doors and make productive citizens. Some have become doctors, lawyers, policemen; we've even had a judge, while others have chosen to work in the teaching profession, as well as counselors. Our test scores may not be what they should be, but more importantly, the lives of our children are not what they should be, due to a drug problem that is all over this state. Our children's environments have everything to do with their test scores, while school systems provide them with two meals a day, so much more is needed for them. Many have no running water and electric and are forced to live with grandparents. Many don't know where they're going to lay their head down at night or where their next meal is coming from. I feel that any type of reform that we have concerning our children should come...
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Nancy Cogore. I apologize if I couldn't read your last name.
Cogore.
Cogore.
My name is Nancy Cogore. I'm a lifelong resident of West Virginia. I was born in a small coal-mountain community in Mount Coe, West Virginia, and educated in the public schools there. I speak today in favor of Senate Bill 451. I believe Senate Bill 451 will enhance and supplement the public school system, not destroy it. My three children were educated in private schools, and it was a blessing to have that choice. I believe all parents and students should have school choice. Educational savings accounts could provide that option. Television stations across the state have played the heartbreaking recording of the unbelievable verbal abuse of that special-needs child in Berkeley County. Perhaps if her family had had the option of an educational savings account or school choice, this precious child would have been spared these insults. As Senate Bill 451 moves into Finance Committee, it is my hope and prayer that educational savings accounts charter schools...
Next up is Rose Rosanna.
Good morning. My name is Rose Rosanna, and I'm the vice president and legislative chair of the West Virginia Parent-Tutor Association. Our association advocates for all children and for the improvement of public education. I'm also a mother of two sons in the public schools in Bridgeport, West Virginia, of Harrison County. As the largest advocacy association in the state, the PTA opposes Senate Bill 451, which includes provisions relating to the establishments of charter schools. According to the National Education Association, even the most thoughtfully-designed charter school programs have failed to achieve meaningful positive effects on student achievement. Furthermore, there is no evidence that competition improves the performance of public schools. The PTA believes that Senate Bill 451 will cripple public education on so many levels. We are not saying we do not have problems that need fixing in our education system, but we do not believe charter schools are the answer. This will segregate our schools; private schools and management companies will be the only ones to profit, and we will be left with trying to improve public education with less money than we've ever had before. Policymakers should include education experts.
Next is Dawn Broke.
Good morning. My name is Dan Brockie, and I'm the administrator of Grace Christian School in Huntington, West Virginia, and I'm here today to speak for the children. God gives parents to children. No one loves them more, understands their needs more, is home at night with them, cares about them more. And we've been a part of educational choice for forty-one years now. Our school's regionally accredited. Our parents have been making that choice and paying full tuition for forty-one years. I want to talk to you today. Please vote in favor. Include educational savings accounts. Not only would they be a help to students in private schools, public school parents could use them towards extracurricular activities, computers, online classes, college saving plans. But I want you today to think about the children, their parents, your neighbors, those people that are making decisions every day about their children, where they go to school. Would you help them? It's not government money. It's tax dollars. These parents are already paying for education in the public sector, and now they're choosing to pay a second time in private schools or doing it in homeschool.
Thank you, sir. All right, the next ten speakers come forward when I call your name. Keith Weeby, Melissa Atkins, Donna Burge-Tetrick, Heather Glasgow-Tully, Lisa Bogmer, Jane Alderman, Cody Baber, Weldon Perrine, Tracy McCallahan, and Amy Neal. First up is Keith Weeby.
My name is Keith Weeby. I'm the pastor of Grace Gospel Church in Huntington. We do have a private school. We're located in the west end of Huntington, which has been in the news, been on Netflix. We're in a poor section. Our school is not for the rich, and I can tell you it is certainly not for profit. I think it's evident from what everybody has said here that we are all in favor of education reform. We just differ on how to do it. My main statement here today is that we believe that parents are the ones. Parents have the responsibility, and they need the right... responsibility, and they need the right to choose what is best for their children. They know best. We need school choice. We're one of just a few states in the country that don't have any school choice option, and these states have shown that it works. We've seen that options raise the quality in all sectors. We need this help for public schools, we need this help for private schools, we need it for homeschools, we need it for charter schools, but ultimately, we need this help for the kids of West Virginia.
Thank you sir. Once again, you can submit your written comments to me for inclusion in record. Next up is Melissa Atkins.
I'm Melissa Atkins, I'm the Personnel Director and In-House Counsel for Nicholas County Schools. Charter schools and ESAs are bad news for the students in Nicholas County. We have thirty-six hundred students in Nicholas County, but law and policy dictate that we have fourteen schools. We must fund and operate fourteen schools. Our funding's not based on the number of schools, but it's based on totally on our enrollment. As our tax, uh, as our tax revenues decrease, our state funding decreases and our enrollment decreases, but the number of teachers that we have to have stay the same. We need three hundred and four teachers to staff fourteen schools in Nicholas County. We receive funding for two hundred and seventy-nine. Charter schools and ESAs are only gonna exacerbate our budget gaps. It's gonna force us to make painful choices. It's gonna lead to split grades at the elementary level and fewer class options for secondary students. This bill is an acknowledgement of what we all know. We need to change how we educate in West Virginia, but public schools are not rogue entities. We operate under the laws and policies that this body creates. This bill is not bold reform, it's lip service at its best that's gonna change our system for a handful of students. True reform will give-
Thank you ma'am. Next up is Donna Burge Tetrick.
Good morning, my name is Dr. Donna Burge Tetrick, and I am the Superintendent of Nicholas County Schools. I'd like to thank the Speaker of the House, delegates who are present, and a special thanks to the teachers, service personnel, superintendents, and I believe all are here, and a special thanks to Dave Perry, the State Board President, and Deborah Sullivan, um, our State Board member who is also present today. I'm speaking against charter schools and ESAs. With shrinking student enrollment in West Virginia and Nicholas County, we cannot afford to increase the number of schools when student enrollment continues to decrease. If we want to look at school reform, we need to be talking about the opioid epidemic and how it is affecting our students. We need middle health services, social workers, and counselors to support our children and their families. I believe all students deserve the best education possible. By allowing charter schools and ESAs, student access will be limited due to the just pure geographic of West Virginia, so while split grades will increase in our public schools, I believe you are listening, and I thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Next is Heather Glasgow Tully.
Good morning, my name is Heather Glasgow Tully, I'm a Nicholas County resident, family nurse practitioner, and a nana of five grandchildren, three of which attend Nicholas County schools. I stand in support of certain provisions in this bill and in opposition of others. It's been my personal observation that West Virginia residents do want to support taxpayer or West Virginia residents do want to support educators, education, and school service personnel. However, they also desire additional accountability from the education community, and they see the need for reform. Compromise on this bill is possible if people are willing to reach across the aisle and work on it. Union leaders also must be cognizant of this. They also must be cognizant of the taxpayer dollars that are being spent. Um, if this body chooses to advance this bill and chooses to pursue charter schools, I do urge you to be judicious. One particular area of concern that I have is the, uh, the Appeal Board process. I'm a proponent of local control. Uh, there were provisions set forth in this bill that allowed the local boards of education to deny charter schools, but then it's gonna be appealed to a board that is gonna be appointed at the state level. Uh, the majority of those will be appointed apparently by the governor, by large, and I have concerns with that given the process that happened in-
Thank you ma'am. Next is Leslie Bogmer. Once again, I apologize if I pronounce anybody's last name wrong.
Hello, I'm Leslie Bogman. I come to you today as a concerned parent and a West Virginia school teacher. My family is a strong union family. My grandfather was a UMW A coal miner. I am a member of WVEA and serve as the president of our local chapter. My husband is a member of IBEW Local Three Seventeen. I am a special education teacher at Summersville Middle School, and have taught middle school for nine years now. My husband and I both have jobs that we could work in any state. We choose to live in West Virginia because our roots run deep here. Sadly, I do not see an optimistic future for my children to live here when they are older. My main concerns with Senate Bill 451 are charter schools and ESAs. My hope is that ESAs are not put back into the bill. I have several friends that homeschool and do a wonderful job, but it's not for everyone. What concerns me the most is ESAs and the opioid epidemic that we have in our state right now. If you choose to homeschool a child that has an IEP, they need specifically designed instruction and differentiation. Once these children are pulled from the public school setting, their IEPs are null and void. If a parent decides to re-enroll the student back, they must have to start the IEP process again.
Thank you ma'am. Next speaker is Jane Alderman.
Hi, my name is Jane Alderman, and I am from Nicholas County, and I've been in the education system for over thirty years. I am also the local president of our AFT service chapter. I'm against a bill, there are some things in the bill that are good, but I believe overall it is more things need to be addressed. We need to educate, care for our children, they are our future of tomorrow. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Uh, the next up is Cody Baber.
Baber.
Baber, sorry.
Thank you sir. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the delegates that are present today for allowing me the time to speak. It's my hope today that as your constituents speak, you will listen with attentive minds and with thoughtful hearts. My name's Cody, and I'm an eighth grade English teacher at Summersville Middle School in Nicholas County, West Virginia. The question that I have today is simple. What in this bill improves our schools? I ask this question because you're about to take steps to pass a comprehensive bill that would affect tens of thousands of teachers and students and the image of our state for years to come. Everyone is watching. To rush to conclusions could have dire consequences. Last year, twenty thousand school and service personnel went on strike because we couldn't afford to pay a competitive wage or offer stability for PEIA. Since then, I have seen progress between our government and the educational community. Unfortunately, parts of this bill, even now, are inflammatory, so again, my question is, what in this bill improves our schools? I ask that question because anything aside from allocating more resources and flexibility for our educators is simply bureaucratic red tape. Thank you.
Thanks sir. Next up is Weldon Perrine or Perrine, sorry.
Hello, my name is Weldon Perrine, and I live in Nicholas County. I'm a proud fourth grade teacher at Panther Creek Elementary. Been there thirty-one years in Nicholas County as a teacher, and it's a crying shame that our teachers are getting attacked when they have very little control over anything. Teachers do not set policy. Teachers do not set the curriculum. We're responsible for everything but in charge of nothing. I can tell you one of the main problems, we're pushing students through a curriculum they are not ready for. The state's biggest problem is the curriculum. Will charter schools fix that? Will educational savings accounts fix that? Will taking seniority rights fix that? The answer to that question is no. It will not, not fix public education. Quit trying to follow other states and their mistakes, let's get back to the basics. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Up next is Amy Neal. Or excuse me, Tracy McLannahan.
Hello, my name is Tracy McLannahan, and I am a teacher at Barbersville Middle School in Cabell County, and the AFT Vice President of Cabell County. I'd like to thank, um, all of you for giving me the opportunity to speak today on behalf of my coworkers and my students, and also thank you to my superintendent for, uh, giving me the ability to be here, Mr. Sacks, see up there. Um, I love being a teacher. I love the look in my students' eyes when they get that aha moment. I love that every day is different, and I love that, you know, I'm, I'm able to teach these students' lives every day, but although there are many wonderful aspects of being a teacher, it's becoming way more difficult every day. I'm tired of worrying about whether the politicians of our state are making the best decisions for me, my coworkers, my students and their families. I'm weary of the stress not only I'm going through, but my family and friends are as well. I came here today to speak on behalf of them and ask you to do what is best for all parties involved. I know it's not gonna be easy, um, it's gonna be quite difficult, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Amy Neal.
My name is Amy Neal, and I'm a true product of Cabell County Schools and Public Education. I am currently the president for AFT Cabell, Local Sixty-three Forty. This is my thirty-fourth year teaching. This bill reminds me of when you're in college, you only have so many quarters left, and you're trying to do all your laundry at the same time. If you cram it all in, your white shirts come out either pink or gray. Considering people here have on the appropriate colored shirts, I'd say that you're not used to cramming everything in at once. Just like that laundry, this bill needs to be separated. Many public schools now serve as the heart of the community. Not only do we educate our children, we also love, nurture, and care for them. I am proud to say, Cabell County with the great leadership that we have with Mr. Sacks, he came and schooled you on that about Twitter and the charter schools. We are under great leadership, and our, all of our schools either have access to or have a food and clothing pantry at every school. This way, our children are provided for. We have become a safe haven for our children. We do this not because we have to, we do it because it's right. It's the right thing to do. When you took office, you took an oath-
All right, if the next ten speakers will come forward when I call your name, Heather DeLusa Nestor, Barb Solley, Ann McDaniel, Linda Boyd, Meredith Runyon, Casey Murphy, Cheryl Hoffman, Randy Halsey, Joseph Cohen, and Eli Farmwell. First up is Heather Nestor.
And I am the president in Montegalia County Education Association in Morgantown. Um, I keep hearing about school choice, and so I wanted to give you some information about some Mon County schools. My eighth graders get to take Spanish, Chinese, or Italian. They get to go to M-Tech every day for culinary arts, building, construction, and welding. We have technology student associations and history ball teams. We have countless extracurricular activities that our students can, can, um, perform in. We want to extend that to all schools in West Virginia. They're called community schools, and we fully commute, uh, I'm sorry, we fully support community schools. There are a set of partnerships between the school and other community resources. Its integrated focus on academics, health, and social services, youth and community development, and community engagement leads to improved student learning. They are proved to work, not charter schools. We want schools to be open all day, every day. That's where our funding needs to be routed. Between two thousand one and two thousand thirteen, over twenty-five hundred charter schools closed across the United States. Thank you.
Next up is Barb Solley.
Each year in Montegalia County, I want you to, to take a minute and think about what I saw Friday when I walked in the office. There was a young man screaming, cussing, somewhat agitated towards the administrators in our school. He was combative. He screamed, "I wanna stay with my mom." The faculty and the administration that were in the office were in tears, not knowing what was going on. I was in tears, this child was being taken away from his family. It was the first time in thirty-five years I witnessed something like this. From what I understand, that is something that goes on daily in all the schools across the state. We have trauma children and drug children that we are trying to deal with as educators. Rucker wants to help thirty kids possibly in the state by passing this bill. I say let's fix all the kids, let's give all the kids the opportunity. While I've been a teacher, we, we packed food bags, I've bought beds for my kids, I've gotten shoes for my kids, and I do it because I love them. I didn't become a teacher because I was gonna get rich. It's not because I have my summers off, because I've worked every summer. It's because I wanna make a difference. My thing is with this bill is, it takes money away from public education. We have so many needs in our society as far as West Virginia, we need to vote against it.
Next up is Ann McDaniel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Ann McDaniel, I'm the Executive Director of the West Virginia Statewide Independent Living Council. I have several concerns about Senate Bill 451. The amendment to remove ESAs from the bill is a positive change because the amount of funding that would be provided for an ESA would not likely be sufficient to pay for an education, let alone to pay for the various support services a student with a disability might need to learn and to develop to his maximum potential. Inclusion of students with disabilities in public schools is not only best for them, it's also best for their classmates, because children who learn to understand, accept, respect, and value differences grow up to help create a better society. The law requires that the state provide a free appropriate public education to every child. The best way to accomplish that is a strong public school system that does not segregate any child away from their typical peers. I have many concerns about establishing charter schools with public school funding, particularly with how they might be used to exclude, or worse, to segregate students with disabilities. Separate is never equal. I do support creating new innovative and flexible ways-
Thank you ma'am. Next up is Linda Boyd.
Thank, thank you, my name is Linda Boyd, I am an art teacher in Raleigh County, a former special educator, and an elementary general educator. I also am the president of AFT in Raleigh, and I mention that part because I want you to know the fact that I'm a liaison for the voices of my fellow educators makes me in no way a union thug. I think for myself, I have my own opinion, I have my own ideas, which I'll share with you today the best I can in seventy seconds. I come before you today to ask you to reconsider Senate Bill 451, and any other bill for that matter that may come before you that supports ESAs and/or charter schools. Even in its current form, Senate Bill 451 is unacceptable. Even two charters are too many. The fact that they are being called pilot schools says that they are intended to be used as examples for future growth. The state of West Virginia should not open the door to future growth to charter schools, allowing them the opportunity to slowly strip away, little by little, precious funds from public schools. Why is this legislative majority so willing to take West Virginia down that path?
Thank you ma'am. Next up is Meredith, Meredith Runyon.
Hi, my name is Meredith Runyon, and I am a teacher and parent in Wayne County. I thank my superintendent for allowing me to come here today. I am a proud AFT member. My husband is a member of the IBEW Local Three Seventeen. I'm here today to ask you to vote against Bill 451 based on a few key points. Charter schools will not fix our problems. Charter schools drain funding from public schools, and studies show they're poorly monitored, and they lead to closings later. Many of our parents have difficulties getting their children to school as it is, and having no resource for getting their children to school will only decrease our attendance. This is not reform. We need more resources for nurses and counselors. We need to address, uh, all students' needs and address the adaptive epidemic in our area. We need to secure funding for PEIA and a dedicated revenue stream, and we need to approve Governor Justice's promise of last year. We need to do what's best for the children, we put them first. You need to do the same.
Thank you ma'am. Next up is Casey Murphy.
My name is Casey Murphy, I'm from Berkeley County, West Virginia. My son is Owen, he's seven, and he's autistic. October fourth, a recording of abuse was reported to the school board and local police. Twenty-eight days later, I find out about the abuse via social media. That was my son's class at Berkeley Heights Elementary. The school board failed to contact me to tell me about this, this abuse. Three teachers that I trusted with my son cared, that cared for him abused him, and his, and it's inhumane. My son was restrained in the chair all day long, I can hear the teachers calling my son- I can hear the teachers calling my son a woman beater when he tried to offend himself. So today, you have the ability to protect not only my son, but every special needs child in this state. You have the moral obligation to protect these children and I'm calling on that right now to ask and to beg and to demand you keep our children safe. We have the means and we are capable of protecting these children. We here today, right now, can stop this from ever happening again. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Up next is Cheryl Hoffman.
My name is Cheryl Hoffman and I live in Mason County, West Virginia. My daughter Gracie attends New Haven Elementary School. I am a parent volunteer and a member of the Local School Improvement Council. Gracie has cerebral palsy and has, is educated in the general education setting with services and accommodations through an individualized education plan. I'd like to thank the Education Committee for removing ESAs from the bill at this time and I hope it stays that way. I am against the creation of charter schools and schools specifically designed for students only with disabilities. The reasons are creating charter schools specifically for students with disabilities segregates those students from their peers. Using funds to do so removes money from public schools that are already on a tight budget. The lack of accountability to ensure hot, for highly qualified teachers in a classroom and since charter schools are not required to provide transportation for students, a student who uses a wheelchair for mobility and a parent that does not have a wheelchair accessible vehicle.
Thank you ma'am. Next up is Randy Halsey.
Good morning. My name is Randy Halsey and I'm a social studies teacher from Midland Trail High School in Fayette County. I'd like to thank Mr. George for the opportunity to let me speak here today, uh, be away from my duties at school, which is where I should be. I shouldn't be here speaking against this bill. My place is in the schoolhouses, in my classroom. However, I'm going to say my kids are going to get the best social studies lesson that they can ever get today because I'm hoping they're watching and hoping they're learning that our democracy is so great that we can agree and we can disagree, but this democracy in West Virginia and in the United States, it functions. It works. West Virginia does not need charter schools. Creating charter schools creates another layer bureaucracy that we simply do not need in this state. Data suggests that 17% of charter school students do significantly better. The research goes on to say that 37% of charter school students perform significantly worse. The remaining students perform the same as if they were in a public school. The most meaningful reform that schools need in West Virginia is helping schools, school staff, and more importantly, children deal with the opioid epidemic. Every day, in every school, in every county in West Virginia, at least one child. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Joseph Cohen.
My name is Joseph Cohen. I'm the executive director of the ACLU of West Virginia. I was very glad to see that the version of Senate Bill 451 that left the House Education Committee had removed the education savings accounts provision. And I speak now to urge every member of this body to ensure that ESAs or other voucher schemes are not part of any education reform package going forward. One thing that was particularly disturbing about the bill that passed the Senate is that our tax dollars would have gone to schools that can and do discriminate against students in admission. Under the version of Senate Bill 451 that passed the Senate, private schools that receive state funds, ESA funds, would merely have had to certify that they complied with 42 USC Section 1981. For those who don't know, that's the Civil Rights of 1866. 1866. As such, there was nothing in the bill that would have prohibited private schools that have rules that say no Jews allowed, or no LGBTQ kids allowed, or no girls allowed, or no kids in wheelchairs, or no immigrants, or no pregnant kids, or no poor kids allowed from receiving our tax dollars. I cannot believe the Senate actually believed it would have been acceptable for our tax dollars to go to schools that discriminate against any children. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Once again, you can submit your written comments to me for inclusion in the record. Up next is Eli Baumwell.
Mr. Chairman, good morning. Uh, members of the Health Finance Committee and other delegates, thank you for having me. My name is Eli Baumwell and I am the policy director for the ACLU of West Virginia. I'm also a West Virginia parent with three children about to enter the public education system. And I want to start by commending the House Education Committee for significantly improving the bill that came out of the, uh, Senate. It's a much better bill, but it's still flawed. Notably, opening the schools, the state to charter schools even as a pilot program creates several constitutional concerns. Article 12, Section 10 of the West Virginia Constitution requires voter approval of any new school district or organization, which is in direct conflict with how charter schools would be established. The rec decision and the implementation of the educational master plan ultimately puts the supervision of schools under the State Board of Education as a constitutional mandate. Exempting charters from this supervision directly contradicts this requirement. Finally, opening the doors to charter schools inevitably results in siphoning money from public school districts. As it will be resourced poor districts that are already struggling with basic operating costs that are most likely to lose students, it'll only exacerbate inequality between, between districts, a likely violation of the equal protection mandate also explained in the rec decision. Now, I also want to address comments about the inappropriate treatment of some students with different needs and the bullying that goes on in schools. Um, the ACLU does and will hold schools accountable. Charter schools are exempt from this.
The next 10, 10 speakers will come forward when I call your name. Jason Huffman, Jesse Troyan, Ashley Mullins, Tracy White, Scott Fairchild, Rochelle Engen, Steve Roberts, Andrea Mercer, Ashley Basam, and Dale Lee. First up is Jason Huffman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jason Huffman and I'm the West Virginia State Director of Americans for Prosperity. I'm a graduate of Buckhannon Upshur High School, West Virginia Wesleyan College, and I have a master's degree in public administration from West Virginia State. On behalf of our activists and thousands of families across West Virginia, we urge that the legislature include the provision for education savings accounts back into Senate Bill 451. We believe that every child in West Virginia should have access to a high-quality education and regardless of their income or zip code. And we believe that ESAs would be an important step forward in achieving that goal. This would allow families to enroll their students in a school that best fits their child's unique educational needs, interests, and abilities, helping students and educators truly fulfill their potential. Overwhelming evidence suggests that students, families, and teachers thrive when education is focused on innovation and the dignity of the individual. There is virtually no evidence that education freedom harms traditional public schools. In fact, the opposite is true. It's a rising tide that lifts all ships. For those reasons, I ask you to join us in support of educational opportunity and restore education savings accounts to the Comprehensive Education Reform Act. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Up next is Jesse Troyan.
My name is Dr. Jesse Troyan and I'm with the Cardinal Institute for West Virginia Policy, a nonprofit organization dedicated to researching, developing, and communicating effective public policies for West Virginia. West Virginia is one of only a few states, four to be precise, without any private school choice programs or charter school laws. Senate Bill 451 introduces the possibility of both of those educational alternatives to West Virginia families. The current education landscape in West Virginia is one where only the relatively more fortunate among us have the opportunity to exercise choice, though only through opting into a private school or endeavoring in the homeschooling journey. Often I've heard that such options, as proposed in SB 451, will widen the gap between the haves and the haves not. That quite simply is untrue. The options being contemplated here will open to all, regardless of socioeconomic status or zip code, the kinds of options that only the fortunate among us can pursue now. The challenges facing West Virginia are vast, deep, and ever-changing.
Thank you ma'am. Next up is Ashley Mullins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Ashley Mullins and I'm here on behalf of Excelinet in Action, an organization committed to advancing student-centered policies, to speak in favor of Senate Bill 451. I'm here from my home state of Pennsylvania where our students have enjoyed the presence of public charter schools for over 20 years. I've seen firsthand the impact of successful charter schools on students from urban centers like Philadelphia and Pittsburgh, all the way to the very rural town of Tiddyoot in our, in our northern tier. Charter schools are tuition-free public schools that have the freedom to meet the unique needs of their students. Instead of being run directly by a school district, they operate under a performance contract with an authorizer, which could hopefully be a district, state commission, or an institution of higher education as originally provided for in 451. I do want to leave you with this thought. A defining characteristic of charters is that they are opt-in. This means all individuals in the school are there by choice, the families, teachers, administrators, board members, et cetera. No one is assigned to a charter school. Everyone joins through voluntary association. There is no greater form of local control than having to attract and keep all interested parties. If a school fails to deliver, it can be shut down by the authorizer for not meeting the contract or by parents. Thank you.
Next up is Tracy White.
My name is Tracy White and I'm a proud member of Canal County Board of Education. Our board voted unanimously in a resolution against Senate Bill 40, 451. Over the past week, I have had many representatives come up and speak to me. I've been invited to the table as a stakeholder. I've sat in some of your offices, some I've followed to the bathroom because I didn't feel like I had enough time to say what I wanted to say. Um, some concerns or conversations being made about creating a charter school specifically for kids in special education. Let me be the first to let you know that's a major violation of their civil rights. It's called segregation and that will not be tolerated in the state of West Virginia. Another concern is cherry picking of students for possible charter schools. We've been assured that won't happen, but when I ask what a charter school will look like in Ritchie County, I'm told it won't because it can't work there. So while we aren't going to cherry pick students in our own counties, we will cherry pick counties within our state. Clearly put, if students' educations in my county are important, then my nephew's education in Ritchie County is just as important. And if you can't create those in all of West Virginia, then charter schools is not available to all students in West Virginia. If you want to help our students, we need to look at words like innovation, community involvement, empower LSICs.
Next up is Scott Fairchild.
I can't believe I have to follow Tracy White. Uh, good morning. I'm here in support of Senate Bills 451, Comprehensive Education Reform, as it was passed by the Senate on February 4, 2019. I've attended private school, I graduated from public school, my grandmother was a public school teacher, my wife is a current public school teacher, and we currently homeschool our two children. Um, I think that makes me a fair stakeholder in, in this process, process in making sure that this bill is developed correctly. I support the idea of more school choices. West Virginia families can currently choose from public school, private school, or homeschool. Private schools are cost prohibitive for many. Individual situations negate the opportunity for homeschooling, that leaves public schools. Charter schools provide that extra option. I believe in the intelligence of West Virginia parents. I believe they are intelligent enough to determine if a charter school is the right fit for their child. I believe that charter schools will succeed or fail based on the product and value which they provide. Let me be clear, charter schools and ESAs will not benefit me or my family. We will not pull our children out of homeschooling, put them in public schooling.
Next up is Rochelle Engen.
Good morning. My name is Rochelle Engen and I am here today on behalf of the Institute for Justice. I stand before you today to urge you to give West Virginia's children a choice. In no other sector of life does a person's zip code determine their destiny. It is unfair to make a zip code the sole deciding factor as to the education a child can receive. And it is especially unfair to West Virginia's most disadvantaged students. That is why West Virginia should enact an education savings account or ESA program. ESAs allow unprecedented opportunities for parents to customize their children's educations and they give students the ability to receive an education tailored specifically to their needs. In Arizona, the first state to pass an ESA program, parents are much more satisfied using an ESA to educate their child than they were with their previous public school and not one parent reported any level of dissatisfaction with their ESA. West Virginia should join the 29 other states, the District of Columbia, and Puerto Rico that have private school choice programs and give their students robust opportunities to pursue an education, excuse me, to pursue an education that best fits their individual needs. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Up next is Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to be with you today and thank you, members of the legislature and all of you who have presented a point of view that is helpful in this discussion. I am a proud graduate of the Cabell County Public School System. My mother was a public school teacher there. My sister, um, is a board-certified public school teacher in Cabell County. I also have the privilege of going to Marshall University and West Virginia Wesleyan College. The West Virginia Chamber of Commerce, on whose behalf I speak today, supports Senate Bill 451. We support Senate Bill 451 because it provides a $165 million increase in public spending for our West Virginia public schools. It provides more counselors and nurses and helps address the opioid crisis, which we agree is an enormously big problem in West Virginia. It provides local input, a tiny, tiny bit of school choice for perhaps 1% of West Virginia's student population, and it increase, includes the, uh, a historic pay raise for West Virginia public school teachers, which we support. I have a letter here that I think represents the point of view of many employers in West Virginia and it starts, and I am out of time. Thank you, sir.
Up next is Andrea Mercer.
Hello, thank you for, um, inviting us here. Um, I'm from Hancock County, top of the state. Um, I'm a parent first. I'm a school bus driver, I'm an advocate for individuals with disabilities, and a fellow taxpayer. We are not here just to oppose Senate Bill 451, um, because there are other bills such as House Bill 2002, which is another ESA bill, but everybody keeps saying that they amended Senate Bill 451 and took that out, but you still have that House bill. Also, why is there a need for three open enrollment bills such as House Bill 2554, Senate Bill 7, and Senate Bill 451? Legislature, this legislation is claiming that it's all about education reform, but you have good bills that are just sitting in committees like House Bill 2037, which pertains to special ed aides and, and it's been sitting there since January 9th. House Bill 2040 relating to autism mentors for specialized aides, sitting since January 9th. House Bill 2448 allowing middle schools to participate in tech and, and boot tech classes, sitting in committees since January 16th. House Bill 2450.
Thank you ma'am. Reminder to adjust the mic or people may, uh, have a problem hearing you. Up next is Ashley Basam.
Hello, my name's Ashley Basam and I'm a teacher at Chapmanville Regional High School in Logan County. Um, we focused a lot on what is in the bill. We've not focused on what is in the bill for our students, so I just want to bring to light a few things that we really need for all students, not just for a few. Our students need smaller class sizes for all grade levels. It's impossible for them to get the attention that they need when there are 30 other kids in the room. Our students need programs to help those who are ready, uh, to join the workforce upon graduation from high school. Our students need libraries. Our students need more options for electives and they need more vocational training. Our students need more access to counselors and mental health professionals. Our teachers, or, I'm sorry, our students need certified teachers in all of their classrooms. We have so many vacancies. Our students need to be in school every day and our teachers need to be there also. Our students need more special education teachers, more nurses, more aides, and more occupational and speech therapists. Our students need to see their legislature work for them and Senate Bill 451 does not do that, so I urge, um, this body to reconsider and kill the bill and make something that works for everyone.
Thank you ma'am. Once again, you can submit your written comments to me for inclusion in the record. Up next is Dale Lee.
Did I go last?
I'm going right down through the list.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Dale Lee, the president of the West Virginia Education Association, but the true union leaders are the ones sitting in the audience and upstairs that, uh, took the time to come to have their voices heard. For you, I applaud you for your efforts and I ask you, don't be discouraged by just a simple 70 seconds. Take the time to talk to your delegates and your senators today. Make sure that your voices are heard. What is amazing to me that at this point, and I asked to go last for a reason because I've been keeping score, and for the score, it's about 77% against this bill. For those educators who have come before you, they speak against the bill. For our out-of-state, uh, supporters, we welcome you to West Virginia, but if you want to really change education in West Virginia, the true experts are the ones sitting, who drove miles and miles and miles today to come to have their 70 seconds to have their voice heard. Don't be discouraged, continue on to, this evening, we will, you will hear a bunch more teachers and, and service professionals who are the experts. Have our voices heard, let's stay strong, stay, thank you. Stay, thank you so much.
Thank you sir. Will the next 10 speakers come forward? Patty Rivard, Jennifer Butts, Amanda Rigglebaum, Anthony Rumsley, Keith Pauley, Mike Kelly, Angie Butcher, Lisa Vance, Danielle Harris, and Taylor Queen. Up first is Patty Rivard.
My name is Betty Rivard. Thank you very much. I'm a citizen and a parent of two adult sons. I support higher salaries and more social workers, counselors, and nurses in the schools. Please separate these parts out and vote for them. I believe in choice and use homeschool and private school for part of my son's education. I never expected one dime in taxpayer support. And I was a social worker for the state. I didn't make a lot of money. I have always proudly supported public schools. Some supporters of this bill also take food stamps away from people. Now they want our taxes to pay for their private choices. We only need to support and invest in the public good, not private choices.
Thank you ma'am. Up next is Jennifer Butts.
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Butts. I'm a 4th grade teacher from Hardy County. Took me four hours to get here and no, I'm not in my classroom. But I feel strongly about this bill and I'd like to ask you to vote against it, Senate Bill 451, to be specific. Change is a process. It can't be achieved in a few weeks of discussion, legislative discussion, especially when the legislators are distracted by other bills as well. It can't be done without asking the people who have to do the change. And as a nationally board-certified teacher with 29 years of experience, if you truly want to reform education in West Virginia, we need four things. We need salaries that make us competitive with the states around us, because I live in Hardy County and our young teachers go to Virginia. And we have permanent substitutes in the classrooms. We need good insurance and we need PEIA to be addressed, not swept under the rug. We need mental health counselors and social workers available in every single school because every day I am dealing with children who are...
Thank you ma'am. Up next is Amanda Riggleman.
I am Amanda Riggleman. I am a fellow educator in Hardy County Schools of 19 years. I'm also a parent of four children in the public school system in Hardy County. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here to speak to this bill today. I do urge that you let this bill die. This bill in its current form, even with the changes that have been made, are not going to help change public education. The problems are rooted so much deeper in that. I know with all of my soul that this is what I'm supposed to be doing as a person in life. I'm supposed to be an educator. I know that. I am doing so much more right now with my time than educating. I'm trying to help children whose parents have been in jail, are now out of jail, are trying to work to make ends meet, but still don't have time for their children. Those children need loved. Those children need parents who are well taken care of. Those children don't need our big corporate dollars to be taken away from public services which are going to support them so that they can learn. I need you to find legislation to support all of West Virginia's students, all of West Virginia's constituents, and all of West Virginia's people. Thank you.
Next up is Anthony Ramsey.
My name is Anthony Ramsey and I'm an aide and autism mentor for the Fayette County School Systems and I thank Mr. George for this opportunity to be here today. I stand in strong opposition to this bill because let me tell you, I'm just an aide. As just an aide, let me tell you, I work as a confidant for the student that does not have anybody to speak to. I am a nurse for the kid with the bloody nose. I am the extra OTA and the PTA that that child needs so that they can learn to write and to walk. I am the extra speech therapist in the room that gives that child the ability to have a voice. I am just an aide. So what do I know? I know that this bill will severely take away the services that I can provide to the students in a classroom. When you remove me and you put somebody there contracted at 7:25 an hour that does not care about these kids but only care about a paycheck. But hey, I'm just an aide.
Thank you sir. House being ordered, house being ordered. Up next is Keith Pauley.
Good morning. My name is Keith Pauley and I'm a parent of four children. And we used all the methods described in this bill with our four children, public schools, private schools, and home schools, because our children all were different. And every child in the state is unique and different and needs something different. I rise today to support Senate Bill 451 and I ask this body to consider it in its whole. I want to do a little math problem for you because there's a couple of mistakes that have been discussed today. One is that we will take money away from students using ESAs. Let's do the math. If you have 100 students, at $14,000 a student, that's $1.4 million. If 10 of those go to an ESA, they pull $32,000 out of that pool, meaning that those remaining 90 students now have $15,200 per student. That seems like an improvement to me. And we also talked about no accountability. There's robust accountability in the ESA plan because each parent has to pay...
Thank you sir.
Thank you.
Next up is Angie Butcher. First, go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Angie Butcher and I am a proud certified reading specialist at Logan Middle School in Logan County. I am also Logan County AFT president. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to stand before you today and speak in opposition of the omnibus bill SB 451, specifically ESAs and charter schools. I would like to thank my superintendent, Mrs. Lucas, for the support of allowing me to be here today. I am also a parent of two children in the public school system. If you would have told me that I would be standing here less than a year from the historic statewide teacher work stoppage, fighting for our students again, I would have told you that you are absolutely lying. Yet here I am and here we are, fighting for our children, when I would rather be dealing with 8th graders, if you can imagine that. We are appalled that educators were not consulted in the making of this bill. In fact, no West Virginia educators at all were asked our opinion about this bill. We are in the middle of an opioid epidemic.
Thank you ma'am. Up next is Mike Kelly.
Thank you sir. I'm Mike Kelly, excuse me, and I'm here representing the West Virginia Association of Secondary School Principals. I want to recognize all the superintendents, principals, teachers, and service professionals who are in the gallery as well. And we want to express some appreciation to the House for the process that you followed with this bill and your consideration of it. At the direction of our governor and under the current board and superintendent, we've identified our challenges and we have a plan moving forward. It's not as if we are sweeping our challenges under the rug. We have plans and those things are being implemented already. We simply urge, we're not going to be able to touch on anything that hasn't already been spoken about, but we simply urge the legislature to continue to work with the Department of Ed and the other stakeholders to craft legislation that will truly benefit our students. Put some faith in these people. They have a plan for the future. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Up next is Lisa Vance.
I'm Lisa Vance. I'm a special education teacher in Logan County. Senate Bill 451 was intended to reform education in this state. Instead, it has created division and chaos. How can education be reformed if you have not recently looked inside a public education classroom? It is as simple as looking in the mirror. You can't change something you don't see. As a teacher, I'm giving you an assignment. Go visit a public education classroom so that you can see what needs to be changed. Look at the student that is hungry and sleepy. Talk to the little girl that can't see because no one will take her to get a pair of glasses and the scared little boy that cries because his grandfather, his only caregiver, is in the hospital. You will then be able to see the real truth, not just an interpretation. You will see the basic needs of our students not being met at home and teachers and service personnel having to provide the support to the students. This affects everyone. I'm a voice for my students because they need someone to stand up for them. I consider the needs of my students every day because I see their needs. How did you consider my students' needs in reference to Senate Bill 451?
Up next is Danielle Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. My name is Danielle Harris and I'm a proud educator of West Virginia public schools. For the sake of time, I'd like to say that I need you to commit to denouncing policies that are riddled with retaliatory measures against the educators who care most. Last year, we started a movement, bringing awareness to the humiliating policies coming from our state senate. Those policies were disrespectful and demeaning to this profession. But this year, as we continue this movement, we will take another step and that step is to put students first. We must articulate what we need and what we need is to put students first. Our schools deserve funding that is not drained by the failed models of privatized charter schools that benefit only a few while investors enjoy considerable tax advantages. Additionally, since charter schools can be run by for-profit organizations, this turns our West Virginia education system into a business opportunity. Let me be clear, West Virginia schools are not for sale and I will not be bought with a $2,000 pay raise if the goal is to really improve education.
The next up is Taylor Queen.
My name is Taylor Justice. I'm a 2nd grade teacher in Wayne County. I appreciate the work the House has done in amending this bill in ways that move towards reaching a common ground. Last year, we went back to work with a promise of a 5% raise and a fix to funding PEIA. The governor promised us an additional 5% raise and now that promise is drowning among other issues in Senate Bill 451. This bill and the debates surrounding it claim to give parents more choices, including charter schools, privatization, and homeschooling. Please remember that over 90% of the children in our mountain state attend public schools. This bill does not provide enough resources for those children and that means the vast majority will be losing opportunities. As I'm sure you can guess, many of my students are victims of the opioid crisis. Some are practically raising themselves and the public education system is all they have. Instead of pointing fingers in all of the wrong directions and trying to place blame as to why our system needs reformed, I would like to encourage you to visit a school. Visit these children. Ask them some questions about their lives. It will not take long for you to see how badly we need more resources within our schools. Instead of trying to create something brand new, listen to the experts. Listen to us, the teachers, the principals, the superintendents.
All right, if the next speakers would come forward, Gary Robleski, David Hodges, Jenny Santilli, Vincent Pentey, Brian Dayton, and Leah Clay Stone. First up is Gary Robleski. And I'm sorry if I mispronounced that.
My name is Gary Robleski. I'm a concerned parent first, a concerned citizen of Wayne County Schools, Wayne County, and also a teacher in Wayne County. I'm also AFT local president. The first thing I'd like to urge this assembly to look at is just have a clean bill. Vote on pay raises as a separate entity. The governor created a task force last year to work on PEIA funding. That has not been achieved either. And again, work on those items. The current Bill 451 that came across from the Senate is very destructive. In particular, I'd still look at charter schools and how we should have no charter schools entering to West Virginia. We're basically faced with a task from history, like the robber barons of old. We have outside groups coming in to steal our children's education. We have elected officials cite the Cardinal Institution's survey. It's only 405 people, according to their website. I don't think that's enough to represent West Virginia as a whole. They use the Alec Foundation and the information that they have.
Up next is David Hodges.
My name is David Hodges and I'm an attorney at the Institute for Justice. In this statement, I intend to provide a brief overview of federal and state constitutional issues before encouraging West Virginia to join the 26 other states that have school choice programs. The Supreme Court has a long history of interpreting the First Amendment to initiatives like school choice programs. The court has held that these programs are constitutional, even when individuals receive government resources directed at aid to non-secular institutions like religious schools. The reason why is that individuals act as the circuit breaker between the government and religious institutions. Thus, when a religiously neutral program of true private choice empowers individuals to direct aid where they see fit, the separation of church and state is not implicated. Every state constitution that has provisions dealing with education or free expression can be relevant for lawmakers considering school choice proposals. In West Virginia, the primary provision is the compelled support clause, which prevents any religious test on the people or districts of the state. However, even if there were a challenge under this clause, there are two precedents that support school choice. The first is the aforementioned Zillman. The second is Janice Shevitz v. Board of Education, where the Supreme Court of Appeals of West Virginia affirmed that school boards were required by statute to provide either transportation or equivalent stipend to private school students. Bringing a school choice program to West Virginia would empower parents to take advantage of one of the most important innovations in American education. Thank you.
Up next is Jenny Santilli.
I'm Dr. Jenny Santilli, a proud National Board-certified public school teacher and university adjunct. Thank you for your hard work so far on the fatally-fogged Senate Bill 451, but you don't have a passing grade yet. When I read you want to establish two charter schools and see how it goes, my reaction was, let's give you two bedbugs for your house and see how that goes. Charters and vouchers are vermin that will infest and eat away our public schools. Further, there is some outcry for them, but not a large outcry. Anyone who tells you our schools are at the bottom either can't analyze data or is lying. Once again, the nation's eyes are upon us. Out-of-state interests have come for our timber, coal, oil, and gas, and now they want our children. Dig deep into your West Virginia DNA and find the grit to look that thieving, lying, American Legislative Exchange Council in the eye and say, not today, not ever, you don't get our children. Pedal your snake oil elsewhere.
Thank you ma'am. House being ordered. Up next is Vincent Pentey.
Hello. Hi, I'm Vincent Pentey and I am a Bridgeport High School senior and I have some questions here to ask you all. Also, I have spinal muscular atrophy. Do you understand that when we put in one school designed to compete with others, we are saying some kids deserve to win and some kids deserve to fail? We should not be asking for a choice to send our kids to a good school with teachers who are informed and care and are willing to prepare people like me for the 21st century economy, but demand that you all do your job and make sure every school across this state is given the resources they need to get ahead. Funding charter schools and pooling resources of public schools hurts people like me who have to go to public schools when charters and privates deny us on the basis of expensive accommodations. That is why I am confused that you are providing state funding for disabled children to go to charter schools segregated from the public at large, but also you are sending them to institutions that are less regulated in terms of following state civil rights guidelines. I have expensive mobility services. What will you do to ensure the best school in any region is accessible to those who desire to go to it? What will you do for those of us who may need a little more help than some places can afford?
Thank you sir. Up next is Brian Dayton.
institutions that are less regulated in terms of following state civil rights guidelines. I have expensive mobility services. What will you do to ensure the best school in any region is accessible to those who desire to go to it? What will you do for those of us who may need a little more help than some places can afford?
Thank you, sir. Up next is Brian Dayton. House being ordered, house being ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. My name is Brian Dayton and I'm here on behalf of the West Virginia Chamber of Commerce. Our members are located in all fifty-five counties of West Virginia and employ over half of West Virginia's workforce. They are some of the most prominent employers in our state and represent a wide array of economic sectors, but most importantly, they are our small business neighbors. But I'm also here as the son of two public school teachers. So I come from a household that deeply values public education and I deeply value public education myself and always will. But the reason I'm here today is because we talk to our members and we want nothing more than to ensure our children have a world-class education. We want to ensure that they have jobs when they graduate, whether it be through community or technical college education, going straight into the workforce, or going to college. But what our members are telling us is that right now, our education system, and I want to be very clear, this system is not preparing our students for the workforce of tomorrow. We work with an organization, or I get to work with an organization that has contact both outside of West Virginia throughout the country, but throughout the nation, or throughout the international community. Let me assure you that our education results are noticed. So I see my time is up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Next is Leah Claystone.
Good morning. I'm Leah Claystone, a special education teacher and co-founder of a community theater in Logan County. In the past nine years, through my classroom and nonprofit, I've been fortunate enough to get to know hundreds of students. I'd like to share a glimpse into my classroom with you. This year, only two of my students live with their biological mother and father. One is lucky enough to be living with adoptive parents. The others are in single-parent or other types of housing, such as foster care, homeless shelter, children's shelter, or being raised by assorted family or strangers. Unfortunately, it seems these kids are already starting at a disadvantage. Most of my students receive food bags on Friday afternoon to keep them fed until Monday morning because they may not have food otherwise. Many of my students worry about their adult being in jail, in rehab, or just absent due to their own demons of addiction. Sadly, these students are only in our collective care eight hours per day. We must address the other sixteen hours a day a child is outside of the care of education employees. In order to have true education reform, we must include West Virginia educational experts and we must include the whole community.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, the next public hearing will be this evening from 5:30 to 7:30 PM, and I declare this public hearing on Senate Bill 451 adjourned.